I believe. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in the middle of this struggle.
Thank you everyone for coming. This is a nice crowd. Glad to see everybody. Unfinished business or correspondence? We are looking for a motion to approve the minutes. The meeting dated February 22, 2020 as of today. Seven seconds. All remotely.
Mr. Ballers.
Yes, Mr. North.
Yes.
We're looking for a motion to approve invoices in the amount of $621,351.74 for the period of February 24th through March 8th, 2022. Seven.
Sir.
Call for bumping.
Mr. Ballers.
Yes.
Mr. North.
Yes. We're looking for a motion that the actual gross payroll in the amount of $272,798.77 be approved for payment for the period of February 13th through February 26th, 2022. Please carry on.
Mr. Ballers.
Yes. We're looking for a motion to enter into an agreement with Delta Development Group to prepare a comprehensive public funding strategy and implementation services and submit applications for funding support with federal and state agencies. The monthly retainer fee shall be $5,000 for a six-month period. Seven seconds. Okay, Ben. Sorry, I just couldn't let you address that.
Yeah, sure. Um, Delta Development Group will assist the county in identifying funding sources for various county projects, infrastructure, broadband, kinds of that nature. There's a lot of allocations being funded right now by state and federal agencies, and it's important time to be able to go after those sources of funding and this group will assist the county in doing so.
Yeah, so it's fair to say that we have probably missed out on some grants. So this is our way of trying to find things that's out there. So that's why I wanted to call that. Okay, call for a vote please.
Mr. Ballers.
Yes.
Mr. North. Yes. Yes.
Motion to adopt resolution number 2022-04 to file an application for funding in an amount of $750,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for improvements to the service center road in Pine Creek Township. Seven seconds.
Yeah. Ben, you want to throw anything on that?
Uh, just to, I guess, explain, that's the service center road area from 2028 up to the nine one one center and the jail. That road is in need of major repairs to, you know, with the industries that continue to develop up in that area. There's a lot of traffic, roads needing repairs, needs to be drainage system installed, guide rail systems, things of that nature. So that's basically reconstruction of that road and increased drainage and guide rail systems would be what these could be.
If I can add, that's the, um, by the county, in the early run of the county.
And if you've paid attention, there is a lot of things going on up there. The Cresco Labs has got 200-plus employees, the trucking outfit that's up there, Brad Lockwood has a business, Horse Nine will run a lot of people, just a lot of different things. So the traffic is really increased, as you would say. So, okay, let's call for a vote, please Karen.
Mr. Ballers.
Yes. Yes. Motion to adopt resolution number 2022-05 to file for application for funding in an amount of $1 million from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to use for enhancements to the 911 center situation in Pine Creek Township. Seven seconds. So Tracy, if we're going to allow you to speak on this, if you would please.
Hey, I'm not passing along to Chris, or he's going to speak.
Okay. Proverbial rolling down the hill. No, actually, what this, if we can secure funding, can help us with enhancements of the 911 center site and moving into the future with security issues, infrastructure issues, structural issues, just will allow us to move more to the 21st century with the advent of next generation 911 and how all that progresses along. So again, it'll, if the funding would be secured, would be in conjunction with other 911 funds available and other funding opportunities that we can make useful.
So you've basically outgrown what you have? Is that how you're?
Very much so, yeah. Yeah, very much so. Thank you.
Any questions for Chris? Okay, hearing none was called for vote, please Karen.
Mr. Ballers.
Yes.
Mr. North.
Yes. Yes. We're looking for a motion to adopt resolution number 2022-06 to file We're looking for a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero six to file for application for funding in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to use for nine-one-one radio systems, infrastructure improvements, connectivity in Pine Creek Township. Second. Chris, I'll pass this one.
So, uh, with this funding opportunity, uh, we're looking at upgrading through the entire emergency services radio communication system, bringing it up into the, the future. A lot of the equipment that we have is approaching between fifteen and twenty years old. Uh, still working, um, but with the new technology and what they call the P twenty-five compliant, um, moving from an analog system to digital, we're looking at the future and uh hopefully we're successful and we can uh improve our communications for our first responders.
Okay. Any questions for Chris or for Tracy, sorry. There are none, call for a vote please.
Mr. Ballers.
Yes.
Mr. North, yes.
We're looking for a motion to enter into an agreement with CGI Digital for producing several video chapters to the subject matter of the county's website. It's not limited to welcome, education, healthy living, homes, real estate, or community organization, and no cost to the county. So. Second. Call for a vote, please Karen.
Mr. Ballers.
Yes.
Mr. North.
Yes. Yes. We're looking for a motion to appoint Amanda Knopf of Punxsutawney to Jefferson County Solid Waste Authority to fill a vacant position. Mrs. Knopf's term will expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So. Donna, would you like to?
I think you already know Amanda. She's on the, she's a four H extension agent. Um, I think she'd be a big plus to the, to the board, especially with her connection with the schools. Um, and she seems very eager to, to serve.
Thank you. Uh, let's call for a vote, please.
Mr. Ballers.
Yes.
Mr. North, yes.
Yeah. Looking for a motion to proclaim the week of April third through the ninth, twenty twenty-two as National Library Week in Jefferson County. So, second.
I think I'm.
Ladies, which one of you would like to address that?
I think Darlene's.
Oh, Darlene's on the phone. Yeah, okay, we'll get turned up a little. Okay, darling, we got you now. Go ahead.
Thank you for allowing us to attend your meeting. Can you hear me now?
We can, yes, thanks Darlene.
Wonderful, thank you. Uh, thank you for recognizing National Library Week and proclaiming it for April third to the ninth. Jefferson County libraries provide valuable services to our residents, not only the books and materials, but computer access, services and programs. And we're glad to um have our libraries um moving forward in spite of what we faced in the last couple of years. Constantly, our libraries are helping patrons find jobs. Even just on Saturday, I had a patron come in and thanked me for helping her for, for hours, helping her uh use technology and research. That is what our libraries in Jefferson County do every day. And again, I'm sitting there, I know she does that all the time with her patrons. I know Ginny is there and she does it all the time. And that's what our libraries do. And we provide wonderful assistance and thankfully, all the libraries kept doing today, virtually or representing us there in person. And we're also, one of the other technology things we stayed recently is all the upgrades, the agents upgrading their phone services from three D up. And they've been coming in and asking to understand their new phones. So our libraries are the place to go for technology assistance. And um the theme for National Library Week is connect with your library. So we're encouraging Jefferson County residents to visit their local libraries. And if Ginny and Jen may want to say anything else, I thank you all for letting us join these days.
Okay, thank you Darlene. You ladies have anything to add?
I did a pretty good job. I, I, you know, libraries um are definitely a part of the community that's, that's needed. And I appreciate the support um from you guys and from the community that you've given us. It's, it's hard because, you know, the tech is coming, but libraries have adapted and changed and I just look forward to continuing to do that. And like she said, to help, to help people. You never know what, what a day is gonna come. Sometimes we feel like, like a bartender, you know, someone will come up and, you know, tell us their problem and we fix it for them with, with, with books or tech or, you know, just an ear. So all of us do a good job of that.
Okay, thank you. Well, we're grateful, yeah, to all of you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's call for a vote or not, please Karen.
Oh, no, Mr. Ballers. Mr. North.
Yes.
Mr. Sorry.
Yes. Okay, at this time, Barry will turn this over to the Jeff Tech students, if you would.
I just want to say thank you. We've been fortunate hearing from other places in the, in the state. We have a very great relationship with the county on a lot of fronts, and that's been since day one. You guys have supported Jeff Tech. We're going through tremendous growth right now. That's no small part of everyone's effort in the county, yours included. So I'm the lucky guy that gets to see what these students can do every day. So the best way that I can explain what's happening to at Jeff Tech is to turn it over to them and let them tell their own story. No, you want to be sent next year? Kayla's saving that this.
I'm gonna stand just for you.
Yeah.
Hi, my name's Kayla. I'm a third year over at Jeff Tech. I'm in cosmetology. And I have some pictures and. These pictures are things that I have done over the past three years with me being at Jeff Tech. And I had the opportunity to go to Skills USA this year.
Skills USA, they compete in their own technical field against people from all over the district and then the state.
Do you have any questions?
That's fantastic. What's your career goal?
Okay, uh, what I plan on doing after I graduate is travel around and get like, kind of do like a mission trip, but as a hairstylist and get people to meet you.
That is very good. Um, we're the real people. Oh, they're here, volunteers. Jeff, do you want to get our hair done?
Well, I was thinking, I didn't want it to get shorter.
Yeah, very good, thank you.
Oh, and we do their planning on Wednesdays and Thursdays from noon until like two, four in the night.
Okay. Great, well, thank you. What kind of planning?
Like, um, if you like public school, you can make an appointment and like if you have a request for something that you want, like we can do haircuts or pedicures or manicures or colorating hair and.
Right. Thank you. Awesome.
We also do a summer school where we do all cry.
That would be. Very good. Very good. Thank you. Got it, TJ.
Um, TJ Weaver, I'm part of the auto body technology at, over at Jeff Tech. This is my third year of being there. I started working for, if I give a co-op for Kelly Chrysler Collision here in Brookville uh before Christmas of twenty twenty-one. Been working here for a couple of months now, thirty-four months. I wish I, I was gonna grab something and I forgot to grab it, I'm sorry. I had two rocker panels that I had done back at my shop before, getting my co-op. Again, I'm sorry, I was gonna bring it in, but that's a a lot of stuff that I got to learn and put it to use, so it means to work and I'm happy about it. Any questions?
So you repair, you paint, you do everything?
Um, working over at Kelly's, I get to repair stuff. I don't get to paint sadly. But I do what I can to help them out, take panels off, repair the panels, replace them.
You prefer working on older cars or older models?
The, I like the older models better, but there are some good models that I think you look on to.
Why do you like the old ones?
You look very awesome.
Older things usually do.
Uh, what? He's got a recent maybe seventy one house.
I'm a nineteen sixty-three. Well, I know that we've had some county vehicles and Tracy's sitting there. He brought a truck over there the last year or before and you guys did a great job. I really appreciate that.
I should say that TJ's dad is also a graduate of Jeff Tech and our current body instructor.
So you're planning your own shop when you're out of school or?
So I'm thinking, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking military first, then going into making my own auto body shop.
And military is a good option. You get to break other people's things for a while.
That's about what I'm thinking of doing. I'm hoping that if I get, get my own shop going, I'm hoping that it's a good success.
Sure, we'll be.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Miranda B. I am in corner. This is my fourth year. I brought some anam bread for everyone.
You can come back. Thanks. You, you put it on the correct side of the table.
So, being a corner for four years, I've learned quite a few things. I mean, it's pretty good. Um, we were gonna do pro start this year, but we didn't have enough time to practice our food and like everything we're gonna do, so we had to opt out of it. But we have started doing like knocky stuff. And it's interesting. I mean, we know pretty much what to do. We also can do our service test. We did those last year. Usually we do them during our sophomore year, but Carolina kind of shut down school, so we had to wait till last year. Um, after school, I kind of want to go to IU Punksy and I'm gonna do uh pastries. And hopefully open my own bakery one day. Any questions?
What?
You probably have your first customer.
Especially if you open in Punksy. But um, I was gonna ask you, you always told us whether you preferred to cook or bake. So you lean, you lean that direction.
Yeah, I love baking.
Even as a ninth grader, I remember, yeah, she came in knowing that what she wanted to do. Good for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Hi, um, I'm Skylar Allshouse. I'm originally from Brookville. Uh, this is my fourth year at Jeff Tech. I'm in welding technology. I work at uh Superior Energy Resources in Brookway um as a co-op job. Um, we do as much as building top hats and sellers to uh fixing roll-offs on dumpsters and um we also work with uh rig mats. We weld some of those together. Um, I started Jeff Tech at what was it, two thousand eighteen? Yeah, wouldn't have been two thousand eighteen. Um, I have gone all four years in welding technology. Um, in my sophomore year, I was given the opportunity to go to um Skills USA. I made it to states, but unfortunately with COVID, I was not able to go to Hershey. So last year I competed in one-third place. Um, and this year I also got the opportunity to um participate in Skills USA. Um, unfortunately, with the amount of people that were going for the welding sculpture, I did not get to participate in the districts. I got a straight stretch rate to states. So this year I will be going to states again um for my welding sculpture. It's going to be a dump truck. Um, my mother is a dump truck driver and she um had a very big incident with COVID this year. Um, both my mother and my stepdad were in hos- in the hospital for, since October to December. Um, my stepdad was released in February, um, sorry, in November. Um, and he has gotten back to work and been doing very well. My mother is slowly recovering, but she's getting better. Um, I just figured that doing a dump truck would be something to um help, help her out and get her through her struggling. After I graduate, I plan on sticking with um Superior Energy for a while and um going to VC three in Brookway for business management to start my own business. Any questions?
Is Uncle Danny gonna get to see the picture of the dumpster?
Um, I think so.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure he would be very excited about that. So.
Yeah, thank you.
So you do your, you do your sculpture and it's in Hershey?
Uh, yes, our competition is in Hershey this year. Um, April, I believe it's sixth, seventh, eighth or ninth. So um, we will stay in Hershey, the resort um for three days and compete. Um, hoping to win first place so I can go to nationals and represent Jeff Tech.
You get to keep your skull?
Yes, I do.
What are you gonna do with it?
Um, I will probably after I win, I will probably um give it to my mom. Everything that I've made in shop, I've always given to my mom. Last year I made um a little like mount, almost like a deer mount. Um, but instead of it being uh like a skull, it was like a honeycomb effect and it had like little bees on it and honeycombs, stuff like that. Um, I gave that to, to her. Um, my first skills project, uh, we have sitting on a little shelf in our house. And I also made her a rose in shop that she also has sitting in her house.
So this is made before you go to Hershey or do you actually have to weld it down?
I actually have to make it before I go to Hershey. Um, in order for me to be able to compete, it has to be finished and I have to have a portfolio of pictures of me doing it, um, the progress that I made and some other papers signed by the school saying that it was me that did it and nobody else helped me. Um, there are three different competitions for skills for welding. I think it's for all shops, actually. Um, there's individual, which that will be, um, one person goes and actually does the project there. Like they will weld um different types of things. Maybe they'll do overhead or something like that. Um, then there's the sculpture, which is what I've can, I've done for the past couple of years. And then there is a team where three people get to be on a team. They get a certain amount of weeks to do it and they get a blueprint and all the materials given to them. They have to do it in that certain amount of time in order to be able to compete.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michael Ford. I go to Jeff Tech in the diesel mechanics program. I've been going there for three years now. I am in eleventh grade. I am also on co-op with Superior Energy. Um, I did go to Skills USA. I did win first place and I am going to states. Uh, I'm part of the CTSO program at Jeff Tech. I am the president of our shop. Uh, I did bring this, this is a J Pro system. It's a computer that go in, I can reprogram trucks. Make lights turn on, make them turn off, I can make the horn.
You do it all.
Yep.
Everybody brings their things everywhere.
I figured pass it down the line, right? And the second piece here. This is an OBD connect, an OBD connect. It is onboard diagnostic.
Thanks, Harvey.
Now, I don't have that system at Superior. I actually learned this system at Jeff Tech. Uh, our old instructor, Mr. Keener, he wasn't really into showing me how to do it, so I learned how to do it myself. He didn't want to, you know, reprogram the truck and whatnot. I figured out how to do that.
You, you want me to start playing with this?
Oh, no, you can go ahead. There ain't nothing you can reprogram. I can make the truck idle at its lowest point and if I rev it up, I can make the lights come on at this RPM. You know RPMs? RPM revolutions per minute. But uh, yeah, it's pretty easy. Uh, I was gonna do uh truck driving after school, but I got into this mechanic stuff. I'm actually kind of liking it, so. Kind, I, I knew when eighth grade hit, you know, you gotta make that decision. You wanna go to Jeff Tech or you wanna stay at Brookway and uh, I just went with my gut and went with Jeff Tech and if I didn't like it, my dad said I could go back. Wasn't no big deal. And I would never go back to Rockaway. Love Jeff Tech. Jeff, I, I actually say Jeff Tech's my home school. That's what I said. Uh, any question?
So what, what are you gonna do after you graduate? Are you gonna like sweep up these diesel trucks?
Don't, I don't a hundred percent know yet. I know I want to go into this direction. Haven't quite decided whether I want to drive, whether I want to mechanic. Prime mechanic for a few years. I have this get ready quick scheme where, you know, you go out, be a big be a big mechanic, you know, make a couple hundred a year. Whenever you hit that six year old age, just chill out, rest your life. But other than that, I mean, it's, it's a breeze there. I think mechanics being, it's easy. I have a picture. Just want to see that on my phone. We actually took a Cummins motor out. This has been two months in the making. We still have another month out for this engine to get there. We had it in the air yesterday. Finally got it out. The engine bay is nine and a half feet long. Pretty big. You want to see the picture?
Yeah. You've come this far.
So here it is.
Just don't tell him to the government when you can use like hacking other people's cars. You just pick them up off.
There you go.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That is how the T eight hundred can work. Here is the engine. That circular thing, ring and middle there, that's for transmission. Yeah. Actually took like thirty five minutes to actually pull it off the transmission because inside that spindle there had rust and all over. Why people like me?
People like you.
Here's the actual frame. The engine itself. I've done various things there. I've actually, they've got me on the welder a little bit. I'm not that great. But if I need to put two pieces of metal together, I can.
Good to know people who are.
Yeah. Like I said, it's just a breeze there. I can get mechanic easily.
You want to talk about your dog pound project? Cause I think that's pretty interesting.
My dog pound. Oh, Bloomberg. Oh, yeah. Okay, so we're going to Bloomberg for this like, it's like a shark tank type presentation deal. And you have three minutes to pitch the product and five minutes to then ask questions. And our product is actually going to be a tracking device put inside of a broadhead for hunting.
Oh.
And the idea is make a hollow point type style so that whatever blood, guts, whatever goes through the animal pushes it out inside. So that's the big uh plan.
Do you want to refine the pitch?
Better idea, but straight to the point as you said. Uh, I'll grab that. But this, uh, I want to say it was like forty eight hundred bucks. I know that, not so good, so y'all trust us.
It would be interesting to see you on Shark Tank, so you should let us know.
Hey, this is a million dollar idea. I got, all my teachers telling me to, you know, remember who they are. But never forget a good name.
I had a nephew that was on a shark tank. It's a very interesting thing.
Really? Wow.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Good job.
That's it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Lauren Leonard. I am a senior in the visual media arts program. I like taking pictures, so I really like photography. The kinds of pictures I like to take are nature, landscape, animals and portraits of people. I actually brought pictures that I took of nature.
Give this to me.
My ninth grade year, I had the opportunity of attending Skill USA for photography and I placed third. I was supposed to go states because the person that was supposed to go for first place was unable to go. But even COVID, I was not able to go to Skills USA. This year I'm going to Skills USA, the States and Hershey PA for website design. When I graduate, I want to become a photographer for Interstate Studios.
Good for you.
Any questions?
So Lauren, you do outside photography, right?
Yes.
So what are the kinds of things you have to deal with with regard to like natural light and shadows? So I know, I know people who are photographers and I hear them talk about struggling with, with that and angles and things like that, so. What?
Well, I use different perspectives. If you're gonna do indoor photography, you can get a lighting system and you can maybe different colors or tones. But outside photography, actually, I just focus on the light from usually the sun. But sometimes it does get hard in pictures or I use the modes on my camera. I can change and it will change the colors in the photo. So it's not so bright or too dark.
You just use regular digital cameras or?
I have a Canon.
You have a Canon?
Yes.
Yeah.
Those are beautiful.
So one of the contracts that we just accepted for that, that company CGI, that's what they're gonna be doing for the county's website. They'll come in and do video and pictures and put that on our website. So it's interesting.
And Lauren's done a lot of the work on the marketing products for Jeff Tech too and our photos you see on our website, literature, different things like that or skills in a video. A lot of them come from her.
I've worked on their recent video.
Yeah.
Did a thank you video for the school board.
Good for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I'm Mariska Isaac. I'm a junior in the advanced manufacturing program at Jeff Tech. This is one of the NIMs projects that I've had to do. The, I forget what NIM stands for, but um well, National Institute of Metalworking Skills. Um, it's kind of like SATs or ACTs of like machine shop. And so this is only my second year in advanced manufacturing and I've already completed four and a half of the seven NIMs. Which usually it takes like four years to complete all of the NIMs, but I've completed almost all of them too. Um, and um, this job is called the Between and Centered Job and it specifically shows that you know how to use a wave. But there's different threads and borders. Um, I'm also going to do Pittsburgh for the Dog Pound Challenge. My group is like en- engineering this like paint can lid that like whenever you pour paint out of a paint can, they're like hinking walls and stuff. The paint gets everywhere and it's all messy, so we're gonna make like this like lid that's kind of like a funnel, so it's not messy.
Please do that. So I'm sorry, Marie, Marisha?
Mariska.
Mariska.
Yeah. Do you know Mariska Hartite from Law Order SVU? I'm named after.
So you kind of Benson. You said you were able to go through so much of this in just two years and only take seven. How, how was that?
I mean.
Possible? How did you do that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm one of the smartest kids at tech, but I'm
But it all makes sense though.
I'm this early fast learner and I like working with my hands.
I think also it goes without saying, you see their stories that these are extremely dedicated students. Period. They work hard. They do what they're asked to do and, and they're gonna be the leaders tomorrow. And that's, that's why she's so far ahead. They all are. So after school, where will you work? What will you do? What you plan?
Um, well, next year I'm planning on going on co-op for probably either Miller welding or Brookville equipment. And I'll probably work with them for a few years and then probably I might start my own business in machining, but I don't know. I don't really know what I want to do.
Good for you. Yeah. Good luck and whatever you decide.
All right, thanks. I'd like to make a general comment if I may. Um, you, you ladies and gentlemen are inspiring. I am not saying that because you're there and I'm happy to be on this side of the table. It, it is encouraging hearing all of you uh speak about what you're going through, what you're working toward, your goals, your ambitions. Life is gonna present you with challenges that you can't imagine right now, that you're developing, you've already developed. The mindset of working through those issues to accomplish your goal and uh and adapt to what life is bringing. I think we would all be very interested in having you come back and, you know, update us on how you're progressing. Uh, you're a future. We need you. If life, wherever life takes you, whether it's, you know, away or I'd like to see as many young people as we can stay in our community, uh but wherever that leads. What you're doing and where you find yourself, the way you're developing your, your own um areas of interest, it's critical. Uh, it, it's not just what you're doing, but it's important in this whole country. What you, what you've talked about is what makes America what America is. You develop your skills, you apply them, you take some risks. You're gonna have some setbacks to work around. So coming back to what I said when I first started speaking, it's inspiring. This has really been enjoyable, so thank you all.
And I'm sure Dr. Philman and Mr. Parkin, a board member, you guys have to be just excited to have as you know, all the years that I've been around and seen the development since you've been there, uh, Mr. Philman. You guys have done a tremendous job of recruiting the kids number one and giving them an idea and the kids reacting to it. That has to be very satisfying.
Oh, yeah. It's the opportunity of all that stuff. So, very proud. Really proud of it.
Okay, well, thank you again.
Yes, I'd like to add something. Um, with the Solid Waste Authority, we've been able to utilize some of the skills at um Jeff Tech. Uh, there is a worm composting program that's going on there. It kind of got halted because of COVID, but we're hoping that that'll get started back up. And the kids, especially in the culinary school, were doing a great job. They were actually sorting the waste, weighing the waste so that they knew how much they were diverting from the landfill, which is hands-on skills that they're not gonna learn in the classroom, which is really great. And then we also have the newspaper recycling program. Jeff Tech through their, I don't know if you have the woodworking anymore though.
Yeah, we have, well.
Do you still have that?
Building trades, which is.
That's exactly what it was. They actually built the newspaper sheds. Not all of them, but some of them. And I can tell you that the, the quality of those were, were very good. Uh, and then um they've also helped us with probably the graphic designs. They actually had made some labels for the product recycling. So it's, it was great that we were able to partner and maybe it's time to touch base with you again to see what else we can do to you.
Thanks, Tom. Okay, anybody have any questions for any of the young adults in the room that just presented what they do? Okay, well, thank you very much. Jim, we're gonna give you.
How do you follow that?
I was just gonna say that. First of all, I have nothing to give.
Go get something.
That was very impressive. I'm glad that we decided today was the day that we show up for the meeting.
Um, so not to interrupt you, but I'm going to for a second. Maybe explain what you do to these young kids.
Um, so I'm the executive director of North Central Pennsylvania Regional Planning and Development Commission. Um, we're a regional commission that we cover six counties, uh, Thirfield, Jefferson, Elk, McKean, Cotter and Cameron counties. Um, and we do a lot of different activities. Um, the short and simple way of saying is we take federal and state grants and administer them, but it's a lot more than that. The commissioners can attest to because they're sitting on our board. Um, we're involved in transportation planning. We're involved in uh grants. And uh, I, you guys touched on some of the activities that you guys are doing and some things that you potentially uh may have missed out on. These are areas that we try to help people with and I'm gonna introduce a new staff of ours that's gonna help uh do that. Um, we run some non-traditional activities like our WIC, our Women, Kids and Children Program. Um, we are also a broadband uh direct wireless service provider in, in the six county region. So we, we kind of branch out a lot of different activities. Um, but what I, the simple way I put it is we're here to try to help the communities uh expand and succeed in what it is they're trying to accomplish. And um, what I'm here today to do is to introduce Sherry Dumeire, who is our new ARC EDA or director. Um, basically what her job is, is to coordinate with local communities um by providing technical assistance to um allow them uh to be able to apply for state and federal grants. And I will give Sherry a little bit of a chance to talk about what we're doing right now.
So, um, I'm pretty new, but what we've been working on is a call for projects. So what we're asking of various entities is to, if they have projects upcoming, like you listed a bunch that you want to apply for funding for. Uh, so projects like that, infrastructure projects and that type of thing. We're, we're looking at people submitting a project intake form, so we have an idea of what types of funding people need. So what types of projects are out there, what types of funding they need. And then we want to look at those forms and those types of projects and try to connect. Is it something that we can help apply for or can we connect you with someone who, who can help you with that? If it's not a funding source that we handle, you know, maybe we can put you in contact with someone who does.
One of the uh advanced services, we're, we're calling it advanced grant services that we're looking at providing. Um, and it's through the uh, an Appalachian Regional Commission grant that we had just been awarded. Um, was to uh go beyond what we would typically do as an organization. Typically, as I mentioned, she's there to provide technical assistance. But we never really um got into grant writing services or if they need help filing the uh the reports that are necessary to maintain these grants or even something as simple as uh providing a, an appropriate tracking system for, for those grants. Um, now at the county level, I know you have staff that are able to do a lot of those things, but um in a rural area like this, there's a lot of our smaller municipalities that don't have that opportunity or don't have that capacity to be able to do that. So this is a service that we're trying to um supply in this region. I know the um co-chair of ARC, Yale Manchin, is a big proponent of this. She comes from West Virginia and she sees very similar uh issues that they have down there. So um they're willing to uh fund this for a two-year period and it's gonna be a results oriented type activity, but if we can prove that there's a need in our, in our communities to provide this service, they're willing to entertain funding this for a very long period of time. So that's the, the big project that we're working on right now. Funding this for a very long period of time. So that's the big project that we're working on right now.
Anybody got any good questions? All right. Thank you very much. Dr. Park, I apologize. I should have. Did you have anything you wanted to speak on in regards to the Jeff Tech?
To Jeff Tech? Oh, I, I can. I've always been like an opportunity to, uh, promote the Jeff Tech School. Uh, it's my honor and privilege to have been, to be on that board. I represent the Brookville Area School Board on the Jeff Tech Board. And, and actually Chair of that program right now at Jeff Tech. And so, uh, I have been there 15 years. So, uh, I have seen Jeff Tech transform into the great school that it is today. And, uh, as a result of that, you can see the kind of students, the results that students can be from that educational environment at Jeff Tech. And, uh. When I was listening to them, it reminded me that back at Jeff Tech, there's a whole school for students just like them, learning those same skills and so forth. And so I, reason I come is because I enjoy hearing like you do, what the students are doing and what they have to say. And so, uh, you know, we do budgets and policies and you know, that kind of thing, but it's great to see what that, that's what happens. That's why we do those things to, so this can happen. And this is a result. And, uh, uh, I just think that, uh, we're, uh, our area is very, uh, honored to have a school like Jeff Tech. So that the students in Punxsutawney and New Boys and Brockway and Brookville are able to, uh. Provide that service. We couldn't do that ourselves. So together the four school districts can do this and you can see the results of it. And, uh, I'm not worried about the future with our students and so forth. I've got these students at Jeff Tech that I see that are doing great things. I see the students in my own school district. And even though I think Brookville's here and the rest are down here, not really Brockway and New Boys, Punxsie as well. They're great schools or good schools. And, uh, this is the result of it. And it takes those four school districts, what we need to accomplish that. And the four superintendents, ten, excuse me, the four school superintendents, say that three times in a row, best, uh. Get together monthly to work with Dr. Philman on what's going on in Jeff Tech. So this isn't just an entity out there by itself. It's a really a cooperative group among all of us educators in the Jefferson County and, and New Boys. Uh, working together to provide an educational environment so that this can happen. So I applaud everybody that does that, but I especially applaud the students that take advantage of it and look what they can do and will do in the future. I'm done.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And I, I was reminded that, um, we do now have decent amounts of students coming down from St. Mary's and Ridgeway. And we actually received two applications from Gammery County. So word of Jeff Tech and their success is spreading.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
Uh, if you leave Jeff Tech not knowing anything, it was your own fault. And I, I see that in a lot of people that have already graduated, like they're, you know, working at McDonald's or something like that. I'm like, didn't you go for this? Well, I don't really know much about it. I said you stayed four years and didn't know anything. I mean, I, I just strongly believe that it's their fault if they don't go out and take advantage of it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Alrighty, let's see here. Announcements, Commissioner meeting, March 22nd, 2022, 10:30 AM, Jefferson Place. And then the Jeff Ward meeting, March 22nd, it'll be at 12 o'clock in Jefferson Place. So have any other public comments?
Yes, sir.
Just real quick, um, last month I told you that we have the tentative date for May 7th for the electronics, household gasers waste. Um, and television collection. It's a firm date now. Uh, DEP approved it. We are partnering with Goodwill again, um. Uh, to use their space. We truly is, you know, appreciate their help that way. Again, it's for the, the items that I mentioned, but it's also for the oil-based paints. It's for the pool chemicals. It's for the fluorescent tubes. All those things that are really hard to get rid of. And you really do like to keep those out of your trash. You keep, if at all possible, keep it out because it is. Does have the hazardous materials in it. The things that we can't take though, you do on our flyer, just please take note. We can't take any kind of medical waste. We can't take fire extinguishers and nothing with, um, mercury. And if anybody has those kind of items that just occurred, send to call our offices. See what we do to help them figure out, um. How to get rid of those things. And then just please note on the flyer too, that you do have to register and that there is a cost and it's all by the plan. So then I'll share this with the community with the libraries and all the NIMS families.
Thank you. Any other comments? Trace?
Uh, I just, just want to recap on last night's storm, um, from the nine-one center perspective, uh, the two hours of the storm. Uh, pretty well hit our area there. We, we handled a total of 54 calls. Most of that was for trees, power lines down. Uh, we did have one accident on the interstate during that timeframe. Reported an individual hydroplane because of the rain and the, um, winds on the interstate. Um, and then we also had two confined space rescues, which, uh, related to people stuck in the elevators. We had two separate incidents, people stuck in the elevator because of the power disruption. Uh, both of them were rescued without any injuries or problems there. So, um. I, I just want to throw out to my staff, especially for the outstanding job that they did because. It was crazy. It was absolutely crazy there. And, um, I know Chris came out, um, in the middle of the night with some issues and dealt with that. So. You know, everybody, everybody does what they need to do there. Um, very, very proud of that team. So. Um, Chris, do you have any you want to add to that?
I'll second it.
And, and just lastly, on a personal note, I, I want to commend Jeff Tech and, and, and all their students up there. We partnered with them on many, many different projects over the years and, um, been very successful with it. And, uh, I, I, I really don't think a lot of people know what goes on up there, but, uh, best way I can describe it is it's best kept secret in Jefferson County. I commend all of you. I, I wish you well for your future. Um, was hoping I could get my hair done like that, but I think I'm out of line here. But, um, no, seriously, you guys do a great job and, and I truly appreciate the partnership with that.
Thanks, Trace. Barry, do you have a registration going on now or?
Oh yeah, we're, we're accepting applications. We actually have. Last count, I checked today, but we have a hundred and five applications. To, as of yesterday, when.
I know I've seen posters a lot.
You know, a few years ago, we'd have ninety-five for the year. We have five months left to go where school starts. We're up a hundred and five. We had two years in a row of one twenty. Last year was a hundred and seventy. There's potential to break two hundred this year.
I agree.
It's, it's really exciting.
All right. Well, it's our favorite time now, press. What do you guys got? Remember there's a lot of students out there with good answers if you want to ask things.
Trace, you already answered my questions because of the storms.
Was there any area in particular that took more wind damage than another?
Not really. I mean, all the calls were, you know, pretty well countywide. Um, I know as of nine thirty this morning, um, there were still about 500 people without power within the county. Um, Corsica was probably the biggest area, um, with about 200 people that was out. But, um, you know, the majority, kind of like, and unilex both, uh, for what happened yesterday, they did a really great job in trying to get everybody restored as quickly as they could last night. The county, you know, we also experienced a power outage here for, for Jefferson Place because of the storm. And I think it was restored at what? A little after six this morning. Chris?
Yeah, roughly, yeah, between six and six thirty, so.
A question for Chris too, is what kind of improvements will that make for a nine-one-one? If you, if they go in this area, which you really need to do, uh, what changes will that mean?
Enhance security to the facility, uh, better infrastructure within the facility, uh, new furniture. Potentially our consoles currently are sixteen, sixteen years old. Um, which, you know, 24-hour abuse on them for that time period. I mean, they, you know. Seen a lot of activity over the years. So those will be replaced. Um.
Will that help with some of the dead spots in the county?
The other, the other radio project could, could help with that, uh, because it's two separate projects. One for the, the radio connectivity and then site improvements for facility. So.
Or add towers? Got quite a few already, but.
In, in improving existing towers and replacing what the one in Punxsie.
Yeah, we have, we have one tower, I call her Snyder Hill Tower down in the Punxsutawney area. That it's pretty well overloaded as far as the equipment on the tower itself. Um, any kind of, uh, additional enhancements or improvements in that area would require the replacement of that tower. Um, so you know, with this opportunity, we're looking at that as well, to be able to do that. And, and to really move the, the county, uh, as far as the nine-one and emergency management side, you know, way into the future. You know, leaving it better for the next group of people that's going to, you know, maintain and run it than, you know, what we had to start with. Um, so we're, we're looking at all options with that, you know? One of, one of the things on, on the, the, uh, site enhancement, a lot of our equipment sits outside. Um, and at different locations, we really don't have a, a good place for that. So we're looking at that as well. To try to bring that all together and to protect that because a lot of that equipment is so expensive. Just can't go out and buy it, you know, every five years or so. So, you know, those are some things that we're looking at for the future.
And then help with, uh, say like with Indiana County, which has an entirely different system than we have. And so anytime we go on calls there.
Some of it will help.
You may use the radios when you ever come at all.
Right, right. Some of the, some of the, the, uh, things that we're looking at will be able to bridge communications with neighboring counties as well. To, uh, help that gap, if you will. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different things that are on the board, a lot of things that I don't understand, but I'm, I'm learning it. Um, as we go, but, um, I think the technology that's out there today is so much better than what we had when we built this system, you know, many years ago. So.
Wow. Can you believe it's been that long?
Been a long time. Yeah. That's all I got.
Were the people stuck in the elevator, was that also storm related or was that?
Yeah, that was due to, due to the power outage.
Um, are you guys able to give any kind of update on the Broadband Study? Is that completed yet or no?
We do, the, uh, surveys have been, are being put together now. I think that was done last week by Mattress Town, you know? So, uh, Mission Critical is putting those surveys together.
Okay.
And we expect to hear maybe this week, next week.
Okay. So you don't know what kind of, like what the return was on those yet? No. Okay. I mean, I'm personally excited for it. Off my air.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, uh, just want to thank Barry and Dr. Park and the students for coming here today. It was a great thing. The library, I'll remind everybody that came, we appreciate it. We are looking for a motion that the meeting be adjourned. For a second. Over both of you?
Yes, of course.
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
I want to share this.
Yeah. You're what?
Amanda, are we going to give you a picture, Barry, before you leave?